Kind of ridiculous. Oh, so I guess I do have to admit you. Is it recording? It is recording. Let's pause that.
I guess March, we held our virtual meetings and I decided that it was easier for me to come up to town hall and do the meetings just to keep the distraction of my family and kids at the house. So I've spent the last handful of months on meeting nights up here by myself, looking in the computer screen. So it is very nice to have some bases back and to have our council back and our staff. So we just hope that we can continue this and that we all stay healthy. So I would first like to start out by asking Father Todd Bill from St. Margaret's Episcopal Church to if you'd like to come up, if you want to stay back there either way, if you're fine.
Well, I love number back here.
Okay, and he will be answering this.
Janet, I'm happy to do that. I'm thankful that y'all are back here doing the work and so that everybody can say. But I offer for prayer from our prayer book, a prayer for those in civil authority. I thought that'd be nice to hear. Let us pray. O Lord, our governor, whose glory is in all the world, we commend this nation to thy merciful care, that being guided by thy providence, we may dwell secure in thy peace. Grant to the president of the United States, the governor of this state, to this council, and to all who hold authority, wisdom and strength to know and to do thy will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve this people in thy fear through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, world without. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. You're welcome to say.
My wife's waiting for dinner.
There you go. I'll wait too. Okay, I will open our meeting at 7:02. Was that October 12, 2020? And we'll say I'm a bunch. I'm a little rusty here. I believe we've discussed having it. Normally, our Christmas dividing is now the Friday before Thanksgiving. And to give us time to pray through town, we're going to do it on the Saturday, November 21st. So that's the Saturday before Thanksgiving. So we'll just kind of keep everybody posted. That's the plan. And we'll have a route and some more information. So I would just say, look at your emails, keep up with Facebook and Instagram and in our Facebook and our website. So that's all I have.
Men, yes. The only thing I have is True Light sponsored our September 19th fall shredding event. We more than doubled the amount of material we normally shred. We actually shredded 10 tons, 10 tons of material for Union County. And that's two truckloads of material. And we had people that were out there for five hours. I want to thank Officer Pratt for coming, DJ Chow, and Jason Perez for some youth volunteers. Toya Bailey from True Light worked the whole time. Herr Cowles worked the whole time. We were there for five hours. But again, we doubled what we normally do. It wasn't pretty, but it got done. So.
We'd still be out there shredding.
10 tons, 20,000 pounds, 10 tons.
It was good then. It was good stuff.
I really don't have any reports. I just have a request for staff. I know there's been some concerns in our residence about some proposed developments that may or may not have ever been coming to fruition. I was asking if you could in the next newsletter put a link to the feed on our website where it has a list of all of our active developments and subdivisions and projects that have been approved or been proposed to the council. So that way they'll know that they have to scale the play, whether or not.
I'll give a report on the luncheon meeting from the West Union Municipal Alliance. Our economy meeting, or September meeting went well. Still working on getting a few things set up and established. We've got a new letter pad. We've got some logos that we've approved. But as far as the business, I want to thank the council because we do have the first, well, the first time that we got to was this proposal, this resolution that we are supporting Weston Chapel in our opposition to Park Place development that's supposed to go in. That's on our agenda tonight. I can tell you that every community in the neighborhood wants to propose to it. And all the reps, we were bringing that resolution back to our individual councils to do exactly what we're doing tonight to sign off on and send that to the county to say that we are in opposition to that. The other things that we're working on is a proposal that hopefully we will have ready to present to our individual councils in November, dealing with our proposal to the county about the donut holes, about county unincorporated property that's around here, and how we would like that to see that addressed in the Union 2050 plan. And also, the other thing we're trying to work on is something that we've brought up a list of our last meeting is a possible alternative revenue streams or revenue sources for traffic projects that are deemed critical enough that hopefully we can find some federal money or something that we can figure out a way to tap into and help each other out. And that's, that's all I've got.
Okay. Public comments?
I don't think so.
Public safety. Hi, Deputy Crawford.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Crawford. I work for Town of Weddington through the Union County Sheriff's Office as contract deputy. As far as our public safety report this month, we're just sort of passing on to residents as far as, you know, it's Halloween. We're not exactly sure how that's going to look this year, but they need to take the standard precautions that they can to sort of, you know, limit their distance between people while they're out scouring the neighborhood. If they're going to actually go out and do that. And if homeowners aren't interested, kids coming to their house, just make sure that their lights are off so that you don't have people knocking on your door. I believe Deputy Ren is going to be working this Halloween. I believe I'm going to be coming in as well, just so that we added Deputy in town here in the circuitry, just in case there is a lot of kids out. Also, because the holidays are coming up, November, December, we just wanted to pass on. I know I passed it on one time before, but the United States Postal Service has an informed delivery. And if you're, a lot of people with COVID is doing a lot of deliveries to the house. And it's an email system that sends you a picture of all your, all your mail that's coming to your residence. Also, gives you a list of packages, packages so that you know when they're going to come to the house. So if you are interested in that, go to the United States Postal Service website and you can get some more information on that. And now I want to introduce Deputy Grant Ren. He's now assigned to the Town of Weddington, replacing Sean Dodd, who left to go to a school resource position. Deputy Ren graduated from Parkwood High School in 2007. He joined the United States Air Force and has been deployed three times while serving. Deputy Ren was a part of Operation Record Freedom, Operation During Freedom while on active duty. In 2010, he graduated from the, from the basic law enforcement training as a top cadet. In 2011, Deputy Ren began his law enforcement career in the town of Wingon. Since then, he's moved on to the town of Stallings in 2014 until his recent hire with Union County Sheriff's Office. During his law enforcement career, Deputy Ren has been assigned to several units to improve investigations, traffic enforcement, canines, secondary handler, special weapons and tactical SWAT operator, and is a certified instructor. Deputy Ren brings a lot of knowledge and training to Union County Sheriff's Office in the town of Weddington as a contract deputy. Deputy Ren and his wife Brooke were married on December 27th, 2014. They have two young boys, Jackson and William. If you'd like to read us some additional about Deputy Ren, you can go to the October version of the Weddington Journal where he has a bio.
Very nice. And thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Exciting, exciting. Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Crawford. All right, now we have Chief Clinton. He is going to be giving us an update on some of the programs. So we are glad you're here and we can officially congratulate you in person on the awesome grant money that you worked so hard to get. So congratulations on that.
So yeah, just want to take a few minutes and talk to the council about some of the programs that are going on and then also just answer any other questions that may be there. So we were successful in receiving two federal grants this year. One of them is for COVID-19 supplies. It was a 100% grant from the AFG, which is Assistance to Firefighters grant, and that was for a little over $12,000. And so what that has allowed us to do is to start procuring N95 masks, isolation gowns, anything that's related to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has been very difficult for us because the supply chain logistics, as everybody has seen across the news, have been even difficult for the first responders to be able to get that equipment. And so what this grant allows us to do is use it for a 12-month performance period. And so we're starting to solely purchase things. We just ordered 2,500 N95 masks that should be here by the end of the week, which will serve our organization for a very long time. And also additional medical gloves and isolation gowns, you know, face protection, things of that nature. So that was one of the grants that we received and we're extremely, extremely happy about that. The second grant is a recruitment and retention grant that we received for $334,000, 334,500, I believe. And so this is a four-year grant. And the way this program works is there's two different, two different avenues with the safer program. There's one avenue that you can go that is strictly for staffing, which allows you to hire firefighters. The other one is for recruitment and retention. So we chose to go the recruitment and retention route for this particular year. And what this will allow us to do is to create programs and incentives that will allow us to hopefully continue to grow our organization as well as retain some of the members that we have. So we have a very good retention rate and have for many years. And our growth has continued to improve as well. But as the communities develop, you know, it's always a little bit more difficult to attract more people. And so some of these programs that we're very excited about, one of the bigger ones is a college tuition program. And so what we'll be able to do now is we will have an allotment of money annually that will be able to give scholarships to our responders. So we've got people that are in our junior firefighter program that are coming up, graduated from the Sun Valley High School program, that decided they want to go to college. And we can say, hey, we'll offer you, you know, a scholarship in return for participation, you know, when you're back from school, as well as, you know, other people. We've got people that, you know, are going to undergrad school and, you know, things like that. And so once again, we can offer those scholarship programs for those people in return for commitments to, you know, to serve the organization for certain time limits and things like that. So that's one of the, that's one of the components. The other component is a training incentive program. And so as our responders continue to develop their training, we're able to give them, you know, one-time bonus check for attending their, their training classes. It also allows us to purchase five sets of personal protective equipment per year. So a total of 20 sets over the four-year period. And then it also allows us to send five individuals for a full pre-hire physical. And so all of our firefighters, and we've been doing this for, gosh, I think maybe at least 10 years now. Anytime we have a firefighter, whether they're volunteer or paid, that is becoming an interior certified firefighter, which means that they're actually going to go inside of a burning building, we send them to get an ACHA NFPA 1500 physical. And so that does everything from chest X-ray to a pulmonary function test to lab work. It's a very, very comprehensive physical, but it's quite expensive. And so, you know, what this program will allow us to do as well is to have additional funding to send, you know, those new hires or new volunteer members to get their physical. We'll be able to pay for some of their turnout gear. And also we'll be able to reward them for the training that they do over the next couple of years. So that's kind of the safer grant. You know, there's a couple of other little, you know, things in there, but those are the highlights of it. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have about any of those.
Congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you. Janice emailed me some information on the grants as well. And that was a big help. So I do want to point that out there.
Toot her horn.
It was great.
We'll toot, we'll toot your horn for you.
No, I'm just glad you did it. And I'm glad you got the money. It helps everybody.
Yeah. So we've, we've done pretty well with grants over the years. And so, you know, we're continuing to seek out those. We receive private grants as well. We just received another small grant, around $2,000 from Target. So Target does a community, I believe they call it the Circle Program, Target Circle Program. And so we're enrolled in that program as well. We just got notified. We received around $1,950 from them from this last campaign that they did from Target as well. So we're always looking at different avenues to participate in those things. So we're certainly, certainly excited about that and continue to push forward.
Well, very good. Well, congratulations to you and I can't answer my questions.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Can I say a few more things?
Absolutely.
All right. Like six months. So just, I want to give the council and the citizens just a few more updates. So one other thing that's on the horizon that we're very excited about, and Councilman Smith and I had these discussions meeting years ago, but we're getting ready to start a pilot program for an advanced ENT program. And so we're going to be the first ones in the county that are pioneering this program. We've secured funding in this last year's budget process to host the classes and the certification to last about six to eight months. So we're hoping to start that after the first year with anticipation of implementing the program on an initial basis sometime in the next budget year. So what I'm planning with this is that we're going to hopefully train a large number of our members on advanced care. So currently, we operate at the ENT basic level, which is very, it's a good level. And I use the word basic because it's not a basic function. There are some advanced techniques there. But there's some things that we cannot do. So we cannot start IVs. We cannot push certain cardiac and stroke drugs if our residents are in those situations. So we have to rely on the ambulance service for that to happen. So for many years, I've been working with Union County EMS director and our medical director for Union County on trying to discuss this program and find out how does that fit into this environment. And so we've been working through this really heavy prior to COVID. It kind of got put on the hold and now we're kicking it back up. And hopefully here in the foreseeable future, we're going to be in the positions where we're going to have a number of advanced care EMTs in the fire district. And then what will happen is that those individuals will respond to the calls that we identify as that level of service. So in other words, instead of just getting the fire truck if somebody's having a stroke symptom, if somebody's having a cardiac related symptom, the fire truck plus those EMTs, those advanced EMTs will probably be in a pickup truck or an SUV or something like that. But they'll be able to go and then they can, you know, they can start IVs. They can start pushing cardiac drugs. They can start doing a lot of the advanced care functions that an ENT can't do. And we think that will be just a great benefit, you know, to our citizens moving forward. So I do want to emphasize it's a pilot program. There's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of funding that has to be secured to sustain it long term. But we feel that, you know, getting the initial certification is most, you know, important in the first part. And we'll continue to hopefully build out the program moving forward. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that I don't know if you have a problem with that. But if there are any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer those.
Now, when I see grants come across, I'll say, oh.
Yeah, yeah. There's, so yeah. And then one other small thing.
So that, that, that's, that training, that's, funding from that will come.
So we secured funding during, during the county's budget process for the initial, it's initial, for the initial pilot training. We still have to, we still have to purchase the equipment associated with that. We still like to talk about the staff positions, you know, how that fits into the equation, how many of those we're going to do, where are they going to be located? All of those things still have to be determined along, you know, in the future. But the idea would be to put one of those units at the new fire station. We're going to be over on Gray Road. And the other one would be at the fire station behind Target. And basically what that does is you just pull my three as a, as a center dividing line. And so the unit over here, which is this geographical area, that unit would serve that geographical area. That's the concept.
Good question about, do you know the difference in time from an EMT arriving on scene to the ambulance that would have that trading on scene?
Yeah. So I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I'll say that they vary. And so Union County uses a program called System Status Management. Mecklenburg County EMS agency uses this as well. And what it does is their ambulances rove. And they rove to geographical areas where high concentrations of calls are projected to be based on a computer analytical system, right? So instead of having an ambulance, you know, at this building where they sleep, they are assigned to what Union County calls neighborhoods. And, and so they may be in this neighborhood today. And then if there's a lot of calls over by the target, then this is a cold zone. And now this becomes a hot zone, right? So the response times vary drastically because they're not in the same locations. So I would be able to give you an average, but I wouldn't say that that would be a true number, right? And that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, because the fires, the fire stations are static locations, right? They're, they're there. The fire assets are there. The first responders are there. And so we believe that by strategically placing those units, you know, over here and over here, that that will give a better distribution to a larger geographical area. And chances are that there may be some circumstances where the ambulance does arrive first. But we anticipate there being a lot of circumstances where we arrive first. And that would just give that citizen a lot, a lot, you know, better outcome if we're able to get that higher level of care and a faster.
Does it change your rating at all as a fire?
From an insurance perspective, no, ma'am. It doesn't have anything to do with insurance. So this is a medical component. And insurance is rated strictly on firefighting. And so there's no parallel between the two. It's, it's an additional service that we believe would be, would be a benefit to the citizens.
I have a question. One to yours is this that I got years ago, 14 to 17 minutes per response. And I think that that's somewhat not exactly accurate, depending on how busy it is. Sometimes you hit a busy hour that, you know, they might be even longer. So that being said, this one, thank you for going to the mental. I hope people realize how important this is and what you're doing. And I realize it's pilot and it's still kind of getting off the ground. But I also know some hurdles that you had to go through.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
To do this. But I had a, you know, and I think we have a fine paramedic program, but it's stretched thin. And I think that this was, is so needed. And I just want to thank you for taking the initiative to do this and then getting up at multiple conferences.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you doing this.
Well, every minute matters.
It does. And so I do want to make sure everybody understands that it's not a, it's not a transport service. So we're not taking people to the hospital. And really, that's, that's the beauty of it is because once they're done, they're not, there's no downtime. They immediately are available for another call. So when the ambulance service, they have to take that patient to the hospital. And now, now that unit is not available.
Yeah, yeah.
So part of, part of this program is that while that ambulance has gone to the hospital, now they're, now they can, now they can, they can serve while those response times.
Which is stable.
That's right. That's exactly right. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, I would say that Union EMS is very excited about it. They see a lot of the other elected officials at our school. Union County are very excited about it. And so we feel that it's a long road ahead. So I would be open and honest about that. But we feel that there's some very, you know, good things to come in the future. So.
Well, fantastic. Well, we will.
I have one more thing. One more small thing. One more small thing. And so just, just one other thing, just want to let everybody aware of and hope I don't catch Lisa off guard by this. We had a meeting the other day and I pitched the idea to Lisa that I would be looking for a potential text amendment to zoning things that have to deal with minor subdivisions and fire hydrant replacements. And so we ran into a little bit of a situation where, so we get notified, or I get notified at the fire department when all subdivisions are permitted through Union County through the Fire Marshal's Office. And so what happens is I will get a plot plan of that subdivision. But after that point, it's already gone through a lot of the, a lot of the processes, right? And so we've identified that there are a few little, I don't know what you would call them, but there's some variances in what Public Works has for fire hydrant locations and what we would, what we would, what we would prefer. Okay? So I approached Lisa about it because we have a situation in another municipality that we're working with through there. But basically, the way that the text is written right now, and Lisa please correct me if I'm wrong, but there could be a fire hydrant within 500 feet of that minor subdivision, but it might be on the wrong side of the road. And so that's the situation we're running to is that developers are coming in and they're buying up a 10 or 12 acre plot. We're building a small minor subdivision, but the fire hydrant.
It's not, it's not accessible.
It's not accessible. That's right. It's there, but it's not, we can't use it without shutting the entire road down. If we shut the road down, which we will, now no more fire trucks can come in. So what we would prefer is to have that fire hydrant on the other side of the road. And so it's just a language that we would ask that the town work on. Lisa has exceptionally agreed to that, but I was, I'm sorry.
Covering his bases.
Any, any support with that. That's it. I'm sorry. The train's gone now. So.
That's great. Yeah. And sometimes we find that, that you have, you have one body that has their things writ this way. And then you have somebody else that has it put this way. And they're just not jobbing for everybody else who's involved. And so sometimes you kind of have to lose your mind.
And on the larger subdivisions, it's never been an issue because they require water lines. But what we're seeing is, he's doing the holes, I think he was there, right?
Small, little areas where they're putting five, six, seven.
And we're, we're just afraid that if we don't get in front of that, and 10 years down the road, we're going to have 30 of these small subdivisions and there's going to be a fire hydrant. So that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Sorry, Lisa.
Good stuff. All right. The consent agenda. We have a handful of things on the consent agenda. So Lisa, you'll take a second.
Thank you. Item 9A is a proclamation designating October 24th as World Polio Day. 9B is a resolution in support of the Village of Wesley Chapel against the development of Park Place. This is the development that Councilmember Perryman was talking about. It's over 2,110 units with commercials on the east side of Wesley Chapel. So we'll get that to them tomorrow. And then item 9C, D, and E are all policies that are related to the CARES grant that we received, their federal requirements for procurement, maintenance of our, our items and conflict of interest policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions? Sounds like there are none. I will look for motion to approve the consent agenda that is presented. Okay, approval amended. September 24 regular town council meeting minutes. What did I say? Oh, that's too good. Thank you. I actually did have one minor change and I've mentioned it to Karen. Just, the transportation, just, it should read the Union County Quarterly Transportation versus CLT. Being very minor, but nonetheless. So that was, she did make that change. And if there are no others, I will look for motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended. Unanimous? On favor? Unanimous? All right. The September 17th, town council special meeting minutes. Changes? If not, I will look for motion to approve. Unanimous? On favor? Unanimous. Okay. We are down to our public hearing. This is a discussion in consideration of conditional zoning amendment for Christ Sound Phase 1 at 315 Reed Dairy Road. So I will open our public hearing. And I know that we have one gentleman, Mr. Phil Billboy.
Yeah, that's, that's all we have.
Okay. If you would like to come up and.
Do I take my mask off when I'm here?
Whatever you're comfortable doing.
Whatever you're comfortable with. I'm okay. You need, you want to come up and take your mask. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good to see you. Um, no controversy, okay? Been there before. I promise. I guess I'm, real quickly, history. You don't need know-it-all to tell you how the world works. You guys do a great job. Debbie, my wife did something that her back, so I have her proxy. Back, I guess in the nineties, we were pretty involved in the town. I'm a good or bad. Seen a lot that's taken place. I, I guess ran the planning board and I almost forgot until I walked in, but I guess I'm supposed to take credit. I was the one who started taking over the finances and getting the town involved with the local government commission and the funds. Not a big return, but very, very unique to the other 50 states of what North Carolina set up. And my wife wanted to let you know she was your friendly, first friendly tax collector. There's some stories there, but I'll just leave it at that, okay?
I'm sure there are.
We reflect your father gave us, okay? Gave her the, thank you. So that's the history on that. Also, I want to clarify something. I'm a big believer in people own land and it's their land to develop, okay? You know, all that's taken place, but I've never been a fan of people giving a free look and free use of land when other people are paying taxes at the Weddington's then. So let me start with that and the fact that the church is land and they do have the right to develop. So let me say, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I figured if I didn't, I'd always think, why didn't I get out there and say something? Plus I get to meet everybody. When I say we, it's for Debbie and myself. We always knew something had built behind us. We're on the Walden Trail property. We do have concerns regarding the new plans submitted versus the original plans, which is where we left off. We are not against the church or daycare. I want to stress that very quickly. We're appreciative. I really mean that. All each of you do. Just think, I guess I want to sort of a different light sometimes. I'm very, very appreciative of what you all do and your service and whatever. I do fully understand the conditional use process with R40 and R60 zoning. I think that means a lot of things that may need to be changed. And I, I am going to tell Lisa's top notch, probably the best zoning administrator the town has ever had. I really mean that. Just very thorough, very impressive. Hope we don't lose you. I put it that way. I just think you did a wonderful job. Our concerns very quickly, and I won't be long, I don't know if I have 20 minutes or five minutes, but I'll go with that. But Weddington is unique to the years of scrutiny regarding zoning and the standards that must be met to have a development approved. I guess with Gibson, I'm just going from my years of experience, not a know-it-all, but just I've aged quite a bit and just, just things I've seen and sometimes nightmares I have with things that didn't get done that should have been done. But I just wondered, as a project this aggressive, what were these standards? Just throwing a question out. Overly ambitious plans tend to get out of control and can lead to regulatory enforcement nightmares. I'm just speaking from experience and some of the things I've seen. Lisa has addressed, which I appreciate, many of what I brought up, so I may be redundant. But the outdoor amphitheater, the noise level, I just don't want another elevation church area. Restrictions must be put in place. The lighting ordinance adhered to. The food trucks, I understand four times a year, but I can see that getting out of control. To me, they belong in a business zoning, the B zoning, that that's what is still there, B1 and 2. A multi-concern with limited space on Reed Dairy Road, plus an active elementary school and upcoming fire station, which we're very happy to have. The outdoor wedding venue, I sound mean, but that can quickly turn into a lucrative business disguised as a church activity. Alcohol usage in teenage parties, they will occur after hours. I go along very well with the Reeves and Matthews, the wonderful people. They actually had a fourth house on the property. They rented out and that just turned into a party city. That was probably about 15 years ago. Just asking, these are, just asking before, knowing this will be approved, these are items that could be addressed. Overflow parking, school fire station could be very, very busy. We ask that the previous restriction, initial plans at least have put in place remain, which you did verify today. Appreciative. And last thing, and now a know-it-all, but just asking. I used to walk every piece of property brought before the town. I'd go out in boots and just walk it. I wanted to get a feel for it. You all have other jobs. This isn't permanent, but it schedules permit before approvals granted with the practice complex. What I also consider maybe a potential game changer, I ask you do the same. We're concerned being adjoining property owners. However, churches and farms have a history in this town. And from my previous experience, if restrictions are not put in place beforehand, it's too late to go back addressing problems that, I guess I said I promised and I know will occur. So I'm going to leave it at that and I'm going to wish you success, but I just seen some things that have taken place. We discussed your dad scene that I wish weren't there. But everybody does the best they can and thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm good.
Okay. Very good.
Get out of here.
Is there anyone else here to speak?
Well, that must have, applicant wants to speak. That's all we have.
Okay. All right. Then I will close our public hearing and I will look to Lisa for.
Thank you. Christley Green Church requested conditional zoning amendment for church use on 12.739 acres. It's the northwest corner of Gray Reed Dairy Road. The site was rezoned back in October of 2018, which was your typical large church building with a parking lot. Since that approval, the applicant purchased an additional property called Matthews Property. The second amendment was approved in December of 19 to allow for preschool use within an existing building. And then tonight we're here for Phase One, which is changing the current approved use, the elevations, and then making the changes to the site plan to a more park-like setting. We're still allowing the same use, which is a church and ancillary uses with a maximum gross floor area of 55,000 square feet. Site plan shows two access points. They're going to keep this current access point to serve the Rite preschool and then they're going to expand the second access point, which is right here just north of that. The parking has been separated into sections to avoid large expanses of asphalt. It's located outside of the required setbacks. They do meet the required number of parking spaces, which is 60. They provided 66. And we'll have to look again at Phase Two to make sure we have enough parking when they come back for that second building. The applicant has provided a 50 foot landscape buffer, which we'll have to come back through you all for the design review board, along with the elevations as well. The elevations show a fiber cement lap siding, wooden barn doors, overhead doors, and a metal roof. This too, we'll have to go through that process. Planning board reviewed plans on August 24th. They raised questions on stormwater, impurious surface, and parking. And they wanted to make sure that none of these buildings are used for any retail type use, which we've confirmed. Since the council has called for the public hearing last month, we did meet with the Jason Property Owner, Mr. Phil Gilboy. He raised the same concerns. We tried to address them the best we could. And that is outlined in the staff report, some of the responses to his concerns. State statute requires that all zoning regulations are made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So I did provide a statement of Randy's plan consistency. And then staff recommends approval with the conditions as previously approved. Adding the condition that the amphitheater areas change to common open space, which they've already went ahead and changed it. To a lawn area. I think the intent is for like open picnics and not really a musical type of event facility. It's more just an open lawn area. And then that the food truck areas for church use and events only, that it's not a big business type food truck area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I believe Pastor Matt Simpkins is here as well to provide you all with some information.
Have you looked at the traffic impact that they were concerned with, the fire station with the school or church? Have studies been completed with that?
Yes, when they originally came in, it was for the 55,000 square foot church use. So that hasn't changed. Then we're all conditioned that if that Rite preschool grows, they'll have to come back and do another, a second analysis. But the fire department use was already approved when we looked at that analysis. And they knew about the school as well.
The church events, they're helping, you know, like four a year, right?
They have to get the temporarys permitted.
Sure. So they're helping. I did have some concerns at first, but you did a really, I really appreciate the job you did at the end of the script. That really kind of answered a lot of my concerns and appreciate that. I think it's important though that it's not that they can have all these events. They're helping with stuff that goes before, so.
And we notify Jason Property Owners when we get those permits and there's a public hearing, the planning board, or.
And the lighting doesn't link the property.
Right. They'll be required to do a photometrics plan to make sure there's no.
And the sound decibels have to adhere to our noise ornaments.
Correct.
And there's hours of operation that are limited as well.
Yep. Seminarian, too, kind of.
Well, Nina, just, I mean, kind of a, a prime example from food trucks. My boys are actively youth at Matthews United Methodist. Now Matthews is only, it's different. But the point is, is last night, they had food truck out there for the youth. And they said, you know, prior to youth group, prior to their small group meetings, you guys come, grab some pizza, grab drinks, bring your blankets, bring your masks and sit down. So I'm kind of envisioning things like that where you're having youth gatherings, you're having. So, yeah, they used to do it sometimes on football Sundays after church. So after the 12 o'clock service, they had food trucks out there. And what they would say is that, you know, they would have, last night was only one, but sometimes on Sundays they may have two or three out there. And it was for, for members to come out, get, you know, get lunch and then go back in the comment area and watch the football game. So there, I mean, you see kind of some of the uses versus, you know, kind of a Matthews, a lot of food truck event that's going on until 11 o'clock more for youth or certain activities like that. Is that kind of?
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, the architects added that in in a response to some conversations that we had about the excitement of having a space that Wellington could use. And so, you know, Wellington's, we've got this little teeny space around the town hall, which we may get used to. But there might be a time where we make that space available and do the food truck Fridays. You guys can take over the land, you know, do whatever you want with it. Meaning the goal was making a space that the town, you know, wanted. So I just, it's funny that we're talking about food trucks when it actually came up because we, we thought it'd be cool to make sure that if town of Wellington wanted a space to expand that, that you had a space to do that because you can just do, everything's so landlocked around families.
Well, and even things like the, the, the school tool stuff. I mean, that was, that was a great event. You guys sponsored it, but I, I mean, I don't even know how that, we kind of threw that together. But it was, you know, you guys held it on your land. You had a movie and we recruited folks and it got a lot of school tools. And so, I mean, things like that, it's kind of neat. So I just thought I would point out the food truck just because they, they had an argues group last night for argues. So.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one more question, but this is from, I'm an insurance agent, so I get scared when I see things. I see things like a rope course. And I see that woods, I see a wedding venue, that rope course scares me, that guitar army, because line of view. But I'm guessing that's something that you guys have.
It's like, yeah, the.
Consideration areas.
The consideration is more like a low ropes playground kind of thing, like wooden bridges and stuff like that, not like zip lines.
No.
I think that'd be awesome.
Oh, that would be fun.
That's not, not really what we're after.
And that's not like, really, I know if I just saw that and just stuff.
Yeah, but you know, the church also maintains insurance for all of those things that happen. But we have really, really great managers of risk on our council and our congregation. But they're all have the same kind of eyes looking at.
Which I thought on the public event, having access to your playground and all these stuff like that.
So, so that's a great question. That's really kind of what we hope would happen. I mean, this is a different concept of church, right? We're not trying to build a monolith to our, you know, our own fundraising capabilities. We're trying to say, you know, what does the town want? We came in, we met with Alice and Lisa and said, what does the town need? And you guys gave us a survey that you guys put out to the town with 500 page, you know, this massive response survey. And we heard over and over again, green space, open space, a place to gather. And so instead of coming in and building an elevation kind of big building and then just, you know, massive parking lot, we thought, let's do what the town wants. And if you're going to serve a community, they're asking for these things, let's do those things. So there's really nothing, you know, strange about it in my head. But I guess when I talk to folks about it, they're like, well, that's, that's, you mean, so you're not going to have a steeple and bells and, you know, all that? No, we're going to create a space that people want to utilize. So the public comes and uses it, you know, we'll have walking trails and certainly we'll have development standards about how they can use those trails and, you know, walk at your own risk kind of stuff. But the goal is to give people a place to be, you know, just like churches have been forever, where, where people used to want to go into a building and sit and pray, you know, for 30 minutes on their own, like you see in cathedrals forever. This might be a different understanding about church works, especially plus COVID, that people want a place to go and not be in a building, but have a sacred space available to them. So it's got a lot of really great potential and we're really excited to get to this point. And there are a long ways to go, but we're really excited. And I'm happy to answer any questions and where we're developing.
And tonight you're approving Phase One, which is everything on the north, the bright side. So this big barn, if this existing building changes, I thought that would come back to you and look at parking again. We'll probably have more changes.
The little barn.
So the existing house, little barn, one. That existing house or the existing utility shed.
It's got, yeah, it's like a barn with a dead room.
Yeah, I think that's going to be his office to meet with anyone.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for taking.
Thank you guys for serving.
I don't, I don't think I have any questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Hold on. Okay. All right. There is a land use plan consistency statement that will have to be approved. So I will read that land use consistency statement. The subject partial is designated for traditional residential on the way to the land use plan. The conditional zoning meets, the conditional zoning meets the goals of the land use plan in that the use retains a mix of land uses that reinforce a unique small town character. The design is consistent with the unique small town character of weddings. The existing trees in undisturbed area create a buffer between the existing residential funds. It is reasonable given the use and character of the area with the school and fire department. And I will be in motion to approve that land use consistency statement. All in favor? So now I will look for motion to approve the conditional zoning amendment for Christ Sound Phase One at 315 Reed Dairy Road. Including conditions as previously approved for this site, adding the condition that the amphitheater areas change to common open space and the food truck areas will be for church use and events. All in favor? Okay. Here you go. When do you expect it to retire?
Yesterday. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be tricky, right, with COVID stuff? It's just changed all the timing of everything, but we're excited that we can move forward. Thank you so much for your trust.
Very good. Awesome. We are excited.
We'll see you guys.
Take care and very good.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. No. All right, notes, oh business, new business. Discussion and consideration of personnel handbook amendment. Lisa, you want to make order?
Mike, did you want to do this one or?
It doesn't matter, I tend to do that. We had discussed some bully stuff that's a while back. I think about something like, you know, the only thing that I'm kind of suggesting here, I've spoken to all you about, is just making the monitor change to the tenure in which you can recruit. Doesn't have any monetary impact to the town. And then also be going for any unused vacation, carry it over and put it into sick. This, I think, will help the town in routine stat and then also will make us more appealing if we have higher use staff number.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen. That's right, didn't even get around to that. Absolutely, absolutely.
And so it also makes some expense on the usable government or state that they.
That's a big deal. You and I talked about that. Yeah, that's, that's, that's important. I mean, nobody, that, nobody wants to spend 10 years working somewhere to move to another job and start back at zero. I mean, that's, that's tough. Yeah, so I don't.
So I think this is a good move all around. I also like that one other thing, and I think if you read it in the packet, is that the language, which is a little tough to read, but I'd like to maybe put it into the motion as well, is that instruct staff to clean that language up a little bit, just to make it easier for you. You know, I think I know who wrote this, but.
I know who wrote it. I think a lot of money was spent on it.
At labor council or.
Exactly.
Are these new, the new stuff you want to clean up?
No, no, just. There's some old.
Yeah, we know who wrote it.
I was entitled to be involved.
I think it was first with mimic legally, I'm not sure what it was.
Absolutely, and I think that you had discussed proposals of this year, but we take time during my office hours to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. Okay, any questions? Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the amendments to the personnel handbook issue. All in favor? All right. Oh, Kevin. Here we go. Yeah, 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 for sure.
He's got to open up his. There he is.
Hello.
Yes, yes, I'm waving to him, he can't see us.
You all sound like you're having a nice time.
We always have a good time here.
Very good.
You want to see, you want him to see you?
Well, I'm sure he doesn't care to see me, but.
I'm going to make sure, putting this over here so you can hear him.
Hey Kevin, how are you?
Good evening, everybody.
We're glad you can join us.
This is fun, thank you.
So you're going to give us an update on the draft sections one through six on the U D F, correct?
Yes, just really a status update on the, on the overall process. It's a good report. We had our first, you know, real work session with the planning board, you know, at their last meeting in September on articles one through six. And I think we're, we're in good shape. I would just, I mean, meeting went really well in my view and I, comments were, were kind of relatively minor. So I, I think we're in good shape on, on articles one through six. We're about to tee up, go into article seven here at their next meeting. Lisa, is there any chance you can pull up that email with just the schedule? So I can kind of lap them through what we're expecting going forward. Let's see. Yeah, I did want to share with you, we are going to modify the schedule slightly after speaking with the planning board chair and the, and the planning board. We're going to divide the article seven and eight exercise into a couple of different meetings. So we're going to do just article seven. And while you all are smiling about the lawyer writing, I want to report that the actual draft of article seven took probably, you know, I don't know, 50 something pages of state statute and existing Weddington ordinances and cut it down to, I don't know, a quarter of that or so. So I'm, I'm working on less words rather than more, but I do think that's going to involve some conversation around the conditional zoning process going forward. You know, Lisa's been able to consolidate a lot of things on the uses and dimensional requirements and some charts. So it's less words and some charts in it, but I'm sure we're going to need to slow down on article seven. And also articles eight and nine, I think are going to take a little bit longer. And I typed this up wrong, November should be eight and nine, and then December will be the rest of it with the planning board. And then they wanted to add what we're calling an editorial meeting at the January meeting, where all the red lines are represented to them, that they can kind of take one look at the whole thing again before making their recommendation to you folks. So I'm feeling good about, about where it is. I guess I would say for, you know, obviously once you all at least monitor as we're going along and you're certainly welcome to take a look at the one through six draft. If you have any comments or questions, I would say go ahead and send them to Lisa and I. And same thing as we go forward, I think the idea will be to keep having it available if you all want some evening reading. I would say please feel free to go ahead. I'm, I'm feeling optimistic that we'll get a, a good product here at the end and that I'm, would like to think, I mean, we've, we've talked already, our, our goal is certainly a unanimous recommendation from the planning board as I've shared with you all. I really would like this thing to kind of land with, with full understanding of the ordinance provisions from everyone and, and everybody, me, staff, planning board and all of you in the end, very, very comfortable with the whole thing. So just wanted to give you a few minutes of an update that, that things are going well, no, no issues or concerns on my end and we're just going to keep moving.
Because article seven, the conditional zoning is a crucial part of our ordinances, would would it make sense to do a work session of explanation? I mean, to, you know, for an understanding of council, I mean, does that make sense to do something like that or?
Well, I'm anticipating at the planning board, that's what our planning board meeting will, will be. Because not only is it an essential piece to your current ordinance, it's certainly essential to how this U D O is going to land, right? You're going to have things that are either by right in, in a category of things that you can do because we feel good about the rules being set out ahead of time. And then everything else is going to be conditional zoning. So it's, it's really only one of two things. So it is, it is certainly critical. That's why I'm intending on taking a little bit more time with the planning board, just to, just to make sure that, that folks are very comfortable there. Because I see it having even a larger role than it has now going forward. You know, we did at our initial work session, spent a good bit of time, I am certainly happy at any point in this to, to have that discussion with the council as well. And I'm, I'm very flexible on that.
Okay.
We could look at the planning board, iron out the majority of the books. If we see something we don't like, we have less to work out.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
I think we're also welcome to come to those meetings if you want it to be involved in it more than.
And if our agenda is like next month, we can get a brief. Like Kevin again next month.
But you're right, I mean, it's, it's a major component.
I think that if, you know, I think with complete due respect to planning board, you know, I think we all need to have a very clear understanding of what these say. And again, I have complete faith in our planning board, but it comes back to us. And I think we, we have a very clear understanding of everything. And it may be that we do sit in on some of those, on some of the planning boards for the sake of.
Sure.
You know. It can explain one time and that's, and that may, that may just be what it is. I just think it's really, really important that we really understand.
I will tell you this, I haven't done it in a while, but I used to sit on, in the beginning, sit on.
The planning boards, yeah.
And it really helped me at the meeting, you know, so.
Okay.
We just would have to, if a bunch of us come, we'd have to tell Lisa for a quote.
Okay.
Well, and I'll throw just one practical idea out on the, on the go from, from a timing standpoint. And you all are certainly welcome, again, of course, to come to the planning board. But, you know, one thing that might be efficient use of y'all's time is if we go through the planning board meeting, collect the planning board's comments and then I do the next generation pass through of that article seven based on the planning board comments and then.
Who, we've muted. Can he see us? He muted.
The camera's off, so she can't, he can't see us frozen.
No, he's talking.
Now I'm unmuted.
You might have me back.
Yes. Sorry.
Start over again. Yeah.
Oh, no worries. I was just saying as I, just listening to that, if, if one thing that might be practical is after the planning board meeting, Lisa and I could do one more, we could do the update to that, to the draft based on their comments and based on that meeting. Put that on an agenda for you all to, you know, do a work session off that next generation version of article seven. That would give you a near final draft document to, to read and prep for it. And then we would be working off, off something that was, was pretty well baked. I don't think we have to wait to February or March to do that. I think we can do that at, what are your next, you know, if your next meeting has some time, we could try it then or, or, you know, the December meeting. But I, I would just, if you had to pick one thing to spend some extra time on, for sure, this is the topic.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that, that was my concern. I just want to make sure again, I, you know, I've even, and I, I don't in any way, shape or form think that this would ever, ever happen. I just know that there are times that, that things get done and sometimes councils aren't completely aware of it. Or they, you know, the information is given to them and they may not completely understand it or ask or be real thorough in it and, and I just want to make sure we all understand. And that's it. These are big changes and there's a lot of stuff and I just think it's going to, you know, we just need to make sure that we all get it. So that's all, but that's great. We'll, we'll get with Lisa and figure something out and maybe have a palow at our planning board meeting.
All sounds good, thank you all.
Thank you. All righty.
Take care now.
All righty, have a good one.
Appreciate it, yep, y'all be good, bye now.
Bye bye. Okay. Lisa, any updates?
I have some good news. With transportation. N C D O T released money to the local, to all the M P Os and the C R T P O received 2.4 million. And it had to be used for right of way acquisition or bike and ped products. And Tilly Morris at Wellington Matthews was chosen to move forward and use some of those funds for right of way acquisition.
Good.
So if they can get utilities moved and right of way acquired, we may be looking back at this summer construction. Otherwise, they don't want to do it during school and we have to wait till 2022. Which I was fine with them doing during school.
I mean, who, who says they don't want to do it during school?
They, they schools. The people that live in Uniontown.
Yeah, well.
The people that go through that.
Well, the people that go.
The money's got to be spent, better do it when we got it.
Make hay while the sun shines, that's it, that's it.
We received $234,000 for right of way acquisition to start with the court.
So that is committed.
Can I, real quick, just interject on that? Is there someplace on our website where we can also put updates on like right ways that we are either working on or that we have funded for or somewhere around there?
Yeah.
So that when people say, oh, who's paying for the roundabout or when is that ever going to get done? Or when are they going to work on 84? I mean, even, it doesn't have to be a specific date, but like, did you say something like widening of 84 is been put off until 2032 per N C D O T?
Yeah.
Do you do that?
We have a list of the intersections in kind of a paragraph form. But I don't think we have updated, we have where they are in the process, projects, but yeah.
I can tell you where we are, nowhere, we're not going anywhere, we're stopped.
Because they're talking about, you know, in the next newsletter, putting something, here are our projects. Here's where the widening projects are going and it's N C D O T that's holding it up or.
So we've got the intersection updates with Tilly Morris, like to have to throw a new town in it. But it's got the draft plans, so we could just edit the dates. But we can have the plans out there.
You know, just because people are asking, you know, like the roundabout at Chestnut, they had a concern about when that was going to get done and, you know, who's paying for what, but.
Well, that was.
It's not ours.
It's not ours, but if there was something to say, hey, you know what?
No, they still, yeah. They, they, people still like that information, regardless of whether it's Weddington or not.
So how do you get it from the next door?
Yeah, yeah, just if you want to know exactly, if you want to know everything was accurate, go to the next door. Because this is accurate on the next door.
Not really, they said it was open, something like that.
It's supposed to be open.
It's open. I know, but somebody, a couple of weeks ago, it was open.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, very mean interruption.
Okay, code enforcement. Did we clean it up a little bit?
Yeah, a couple of days. Iron one, we got the red truck moved. They have now installed a fence that doesn't meet our ordinance. So we have started another notice of violation that went out Monday. Bounty lane, we had one car towed and now we have another car that's been sitting out there for three months.
I'm sorry, where is this bounty, oh, yeah.
We had one of them towed just last week, 10/6.
And there's another one this time, there's another one?
Got the, the number for us that will get a notice and tentative tow out. I think that actually went out today. On the same, on the same address, and they also have a bunch of trash piled up in the front yard, so.
What about Cricket? Is that clear?
Cricket is going to be towed, they've been called, they've got five days. And then we'll take off Lansbury, we got that house demolished. Cricket one will be, it was supposed to be towed on the sixth, that didn't happen. It'll, it will in the next couple of days.
Wellington's gone off.
And Huntington is going off. So your next month's report will be a little bit shorter.
Okay, all right. Leslie sent out financials, I think she also sent an email, if anybody had any questions. We'll shoot her a quick email. Transportation. I did it in last month's C R T P O, nothing really to update. She obviously got updated information since then. So there's not really anything to update on Wellington. Next meeting is next week on the 21st. And I don't know how much I anticipate a whole lot of changes with any of the stuff that dramatically affects us. All the changes and things that are going on in the money that they're. going on in the money that they're, for the most part, aren't things that affect us. So. Good news about that. Right away stuff, but aside from that, I haven't left them. Council comments. Smith, you can go first.
I always need to go first. Um, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Uh, it's our first meeting and it's glad to see some people come out. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Perryman.
I'll echo that sentiment. It's good to be back. It's good to see folks in the room and sort of be talking face to face. And, uh, I'll put out that our next Western Union Municipal Meeting is going to be Thursday, October 22nd at Wesley Chapel at four o'clock. It is a public meeting.
Backroom.
Backroom.
Backroom, folks.
Absolutely.
Brooke, hi, this is Brooke and everybody else. Thank you for coming out. Good to see everybody else again. Um, we'll do it again next one. All righty. First, nothing. Welcome to our new deputy. How about that? I'll say something new. Welcome to our new deputy. Thank you for your service. Thank, thank you both for your service and, um, everybody stay safe and the next time we'll see, everybody will be after the election. Bye. Yeah. Stay warm and safe. Okay, I, I will, uh, I will welcome Deputy Ren. We're, we're so glad that you're here and, um, I'm glad that we're back. This was a lonely place. It's kind of creepy here at night, so. So I'm glad that there are folks here. Um, I will look for a motion to adjourn. So move on favor? And that's all, folks.
All right.